Good evening, guys.
Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the board of Education. It's a regular business meeting. Call to order this time. It's Monday the 17th at 7:01 PM. I'd like for my other guests to sign in. Everyone please dial your cell phones. And if you're a visitor to this location affected meeting, you can write in comments. Please read the guidelines, the form, and get to Jody over in the corner. Public participation is allowed during public participation portions of meetings. Other than the most times, board meetings are not interactive with those in attendance. But I have a roll call vote.
Lamb?
Here.
Schultz?
McMurray?
Here.
Hennessy?
Here.
McCollum?
Here. Could we stand to the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, board members should have a chance to look at the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, comments on the agenda?
Yeah, I would like to move item number eight, which is Appendix C from Regular Business and New Business. I'd like that to be moved to next month's board meeting. In reading through that appendix, it looks to me like saying yes to that tonight would be lying. There are statements in there that are just verifiably false. And I also feel like that appendix warrants some actual discussion by the board, which we have not had the opportunity to have.
I don't know what inaccuracies are. Have you shared those with accuracy or what are those?
If you read it, you would probably understand what the inaccuracies are. But yes, I can do that.
Okay. We've got that on the table. I would prefer even if we didn't approve it, to discuss it tonight so we all knew what we were all talking about. But we can always discuss it and decide not to approve it.
I know that Colleen wanted to begin on the discussion too. We don't have a full board here. Again, I think something like this warrants a full discussion of the board, and you think that we should have it.
Colleen had a notification of this meeting, just like the rest of us. This is not a surprise meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I would, I have a problem to leave it at there when you talk about it and for some reason we decided not to approve it tonight, and certainly adding it into next month. What was the favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Before we go any further, tonight, we also need a secretary pro temp. I would recommend that we appoint Justin Lamb to get in as secretary pro temp. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Is there a second? On the second pad, we have a discussion.
Justin, are you willing to take on that role?
Yes.
All right. The roll call votes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Lamb?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes. We also need a vice president pro temp. And I would suggest that we ask Sunny McMurray to step into that role for the evening. I think the only reason I would have, we would need as a vice president. Something would happen, I would be unable to complete the meeting. So I'm going to hope this is unnecessary, but we kind of will stand what we need to do there. There's a motion to make Sunny be vice president pro temp. So moved. Second. On the second pad is your discussion.
Sunny, are you willing to take on that role?
I am. I hope that happens tonight.
I have to somebody to CPR. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
McMurray?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes. Next up is consent agenda. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of approving minutes, approving bills, a treasurer's report, personnel changes, there are surplus items, and there's an internal grad study. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda for individual discussion?
Yes, I'd like to remove Dr. Rummel's termination. I'd like to remove the minutes, and I'd like to remove the research study.
So suggestion is to remove the minutes, Dr. Rummel's resignation, and internal grad study for individual action. So we will do that. Is there a motion to approve the rest consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Your discussion on the remaining consent agenda items. The roll call vote on those items, please.
Schultz?
Lamb?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Hennessy?
As usual, I don't feel like there's enough detail in the bill, so I'll be voting no.
McCollum?
Yes. All right, let's go back to the minutes. We'll take those items one at a time. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the minutes.
Yeah, the minutes are just completely inaccurate. There's no appropriate summary of the discussion that went on. There's no record of the fact that we, in fact, did move second and vote to go into closed session. And we were in closed session. I don't believe we ever started a recorder and recorded any of that. And none of that is recorded in the minutes. And then I think we have the issue of what do we do about the fact that there was pretty lengthy discussion with the attorney about whether or not we were going to hold the closed session without any of that being recorded at all.
We didn't go into closed session?
We didn't.
We didn't?
Sunny, there, if you go back and watch the video, there was a motion, there was a second, and we had a roll call vote to go into closed session. I watched the video. Someone asked me about what happened in closed session. I said, "We didn't go," and they said, "Yes, you did." I went and watched the video. Perhaps you should too.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So what would the board like to do about the minutes?
What was the other issue, Megan?
We have a motion on the minutes, so we have to... What was the other issue? That there was no summary of discussion. Minutes are supposed to have summary of the discussion so that a person reading the minutes would understand what the discussion was and the...
Right, so what discussion is missing?
All of the discussion that was had in the meeting. It just says, "This was discussed." It doesn't say what was discussed.
Yeah, we had this discussion before about the level of detail in the notes. And typically, as we run them by various legal counsel and various other folks who use the consult on them, they've been pleased with the general level of detail and content in their notes. I know we've got a couple board members that have not been. We've not resolved that at this point. I know they've been resolved that part tonight. If there are parts that are blatantly missing, we'll probably need to update the minutes and get those, get that in there.
I think that was my question. Like what, I guess I'm not understanding what was missing.
Evidently the...
It wasn't detailed there?
The closing, the closing, the closing.
It's like my previous, it says, "Discussion followed regarding the hesitation to implement this motion immediately and the effects it would have on strength."
Right, the discussion was had. None of the details of the discussion are captured in there. So no one has the benefit of understanding what discussion took place by this board. This is the only record.
Thankfully, we have it on YouTube. So we could have...
Meeting minutes are supposed to serve a role. I'm just saying, I don't feel like they're appropriate.
And I see that they, there are, there's information in here saying what was discussed.
You can vote however you'd like.
Thank you, I'm all in.
Okay.
So I do think if, if there is record of us going into closed session, I think we can modify that, but we didn't actually have closed session. So I guess my question would be how, how do we capture that in, as a document, in a document?
We can instruct. We can approve the minute subject to that change.
Okay. I can, I'm sorry. I don't mean over stuff. So I had that thought of, because we did make a motion, but then we decided, like, it wasn't needed at all. So that's why my statement actually at the end of the minutes is different than my normal statement, that it says, "It was decided that the board did not need to go into closed session." But I can certainly add the motion and the other information that Megan, Mrs. Hennessy brought to the table. So...
You come.
Can you, Jody, clarify for me? Did we make a motion and seconded and vote? Or was the motion... I don't have that folder with me to see what the roll call, or the, or the voting was on that. I know it was very quick that it was the, "We're going to go," and then they were like, "We are going." We asked Max, like, "We don't need to do it." And so I stood there and I said, "Do I need to be recording this or not? We're actually going," and that's when it was decided.
I remember that, yeah. It was decided that we weren't going to go.
Correct. I remember that. So I can add in, "A motion was made." That would make everyone feel more comfortable. But my statement of closed session was determined not because, that's definitely normal.
Yeah.
That it was determined, they didn't, you guys didn't actually need to go.
Well, it wasn't determined that that, a few people decided we weren't going to talk about it. So I would suggest that that's not entirely accurate either.
Well, why don't we, we don't have to approve it. It's not since March, those can come back next month. And why don't we just sit on that and let Jody update that?
That'd be great.
Sound good?
Yeah.
So we had a motion, I think, to approve. I want to amend that to table. I'd suggest we amend the motion to approve to motion tables.
Just the minutes?
The minutes.
I would move that we table the minutes until the next meeting.
Yes. Tell me where that in the form of the motion is.
I move that we table the minutes until the next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second pad.
Discussion on that. Roll call vote, please.
McMurray?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Lamb?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes. Okay, so next was personnel changes. We approve that with the exception of Dr. Rummel's resignation. Megan, would you like to express the concerns there?
If we're going to make the motion, I will, but I'm, I don't want to discuss it into this motion.
I would move that we approve Nicole Rummel's resignation as outlined in the personnel changes.
I would second that.
Okay. The contract has a detailed in it that says that the assistant superintendent may mutually agree in writing to terminate their contract. I'm tired of this board not actually following through with contracts and the details that are contained within them. In point of fact, Dr. Rummel has never come to the board and had any sort of discussion with us about her resignation. I have never been presented with anything in writing. And so I think to breach that contract would be detrimental to the district. And I don't think that we should continue to hold contracts that have language that we don't intend to follow.
Okay.
I, I might...
We do have a lot of resignations.
So I guess I, can you start again with what it, what it was in the contract, the one you wish that you were...
That the board and the assistant superintendent may mutually agree in writing to terminate the contract.
Right. So wouldn't this be the step one in terminating the contract, her letter of resignation to the board?
She has not come and had any discussion with the board.
It doesn't say she's not had a discussion. It says she's going to present in writing.
I'm, we're, I'm not trying to... We're voting to terminate her tonight. That is not what the contract says, that's all it's saying.
I don't think we're voting to terminate her. I think we're voting to release her from her contract, which is what her letter to the board says, which is what you're referring to. I need, I'm, I'm not trying to argue, I'm really not. I'm sincerely trying to understand. It sounds like, it says mutually agreed upon in writing. It, it looks like she's taking step one by sending a resignation letter. What do you interpret as a different first step?
If we are not, if we are terminating her contract today, there is not a written mutual agreement between Dr. Rummel and the board. Her resignation letter does not fulfill that contract requirement.
Right. I, I think that's step one.
But that's not what we're doing. We're voting to terminate her contract tonight.
So let's say the roles were reversed.
Yeah.
And we wanted to terminate Dr. Rummel's contract, and we presented information to her in writing, and she did not respond to us in writing. Does that mean her contract isn't terminated and she gets to stay?
If that's the terms of the contract, yeah.
Okay, I, I just, I kind of feel like we're getting a little lost in, in, lost in it here. Like, she's starting with this resignation letter. She has presented it to us in writing. We either say, "Yes, you are released from your contract," or we say, "No, you're not released from your contract." And then we present that to her in writing.
Right, but we should have something in front of us where we actually present to her. I'm tired of this board voting, and then after the fact, we have a contract that we think, we know what it says, but it never really says that. We've had instances of this before. It seems like we don't ever do this the right way. If you want to vote to do it, you have the votes to do it. I will not be voting because I think it's a breach of contract, and I think it's in core form to continue to have contracts with people where we don't fulfill the requirements of the contract.
So, so explain to me how it would fulfill the requirements of the contract? That we would have a, a letter tonight for something?
Yes.
Okay, that's it? That's all it would take?
So Shirley, we've been down this road before. Do you have any concerns? I know you probably don't have the contract in front of you. Do you have any concerns about the way we're handling this?
All right. I don't have the contract in front of me. I think what, what Megan's referring to is she would like something more for discussion purposes before the board acts. But it's, it's, the first step in it is that you would receive the request for resignation, which you seemingly have received. And if the board agrees with that and adopts action to approve that, then that fulfills the contract requirements because you are mutually agreeing to release her from her contract by the board acting. And you would send her a letter after the board action indicating that you would, you're mutually agreeing to that. If, in fact, the board does not agree to release her, you would send something to her telling her that you would not mutually agree under that provision of her contract.
So would you recommend a change in future administrator contracts that say, that, that remove the language of, I don't, I, something about mutually written?
No, I think you always want to have that option for the parties to not have to go through a termination proceeding in order to part ways. There are many reasons that happens, so I would not recommend changing that.
And this board has never had any even discussion around her leaving as board. I think it warrants discussion when the assistant superintendent leaves the district. But if this board doesn't want to have that discussion, you can vote however you'd like. But I think it's inappropriate to not have those discussions and to not fulfill contracts as written.
So I think that's a different issue. I don't disagree with you. I think it's, it's powerful to hear why we have administrators leaving. I think that would be, be very beneficial for everybody. But that's not a reason to say we can't let her out of her contract.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. We've had quite a discussion. I think it's fair to say that we're probably not all going to agree on this. I'm, I'm good for calling. So call them, please.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schultz?
McMurray?
Ah, yes.
Hennessy?
President?
And McCollum?
Yes. Okay, the other item we pulled up, the consent agenda was internal grad study. And Megan asked that we pull out. I would move that we approve, that we approve the internal grad study as presented. Consent agenda is beside the question. Second. Okay. Discussion.
I have concerns that the way that this is written, I don't have a problem with the study, but the way that this is written, the students opt in to the study, but the parents have to opt out of the study. And I have concerns about minors opting in to a study and the parents not understanding what's going on. And they're, instead of opting in, they would be forced to opt out. And I just think that that's backwards. And I think because we're dealing with minors, if it's an opt-in for the students, I think the parents should prove that they understand what's going on by also opting in, not having an opt-out option.
Okay. Discussion on that. We have somebody here tonight that's...
This was...
Me, too. I didn't know we needed you to say that again.
If you're our chief op in the charge of this study, thank you for being...
So the reason why we decided to do an opt-out was mainly for the convenience for a lot of parents. It's really, really difficult for them to, either digitally or in person, getting every single parent that wants their child to participate to return that form in a timely manner. You can imagine, I'm trying to get this research study started pretty soon. My teacher and I work really, really hard to get that IRB in as quick as possible so that way we could get it approved tonight. My class starts tomorrow. So we felt that that would be easier. I also plan on giving several reminders, several emails that will get sent out explaining to them, you know, "This is why you need to either send it back if you do not want your student to participate." The reason why we chose to do a student opt-in is because I simply wanted them to also have a choice. I could have a parent that says, "Oh, yeah, I have no problem with this, it's fine," and they don't return the form. But I could have a student that still says, "You know what? I personally don't feel comfortable." So then I would want to honor that student and say, "You know what? Your parent said yes, but since you said no, we can need you out of the study." So that was kind of our justification around that.
And again, I want to be real clear. I don't have any problem with the study. I just think that we have heard from parents before that they don't feel communicated with, that they don't like when their kids are surveyed and things like that without them knowing that. And so I think it provides an insulation for you, quite honestly, from feedback of parents saying, "Well, my kid opted in and I didn't know anything about it." And the blowback coming and saying, "You did not actually have my permission." I can certainly appreciate how hard it is to get forms back in, but I have concern based on previous experience. And I just don't want you to feel the blowback, and I don't want the district to have parents who are upset who say, "My kid is a minor, they don't know what they're saying yes to, and you didn't ask me. And if you did ask me, I missed it, and I'm still upset that I missed it and my kid participated." So I just feel like, given that history, this, you know, might alleviate that problem. But I do understand that chasing forms is difficult, but this is just based on what we've heard previously.
Can you, no, maybe you're going to do this. Can you speak to what you might do to, to make, to like improve that communication with parents or make sure as many parents are reached as possible?
Yeah, so, well, like I said, my first, once I start my class, in truth, we are setting it up together where we're all going to kind of have all of these different ideas on the table. The first one is obviously going to be the parent form that gets sent home. I'm sending it home both ways. I'm sending it digitally, and then I'm sending it paper. And then I'm also going to be sending reminder emails all week to parents to make sure that they know that they have that option to opt their student out. Obviously, I have several students that I know will go home and talk with their parents about it, so that way they can also, I've told students that they need to show their parents their own form, so that way the student is able to sign it in front of a parent as well, so that way they just feel like they have a voice in it. And I do understand where you're coming from with past experiences. I just, you know, with the IRB program and how extensive it is, they recommended that as well because they felt that in most instances, it was too difficult to get enough parent responses back, particularly in a timely manner, but just in general. I'm trying to get as much data as I can, so the more students that I can have participate, the better. And basically, the IRB application, they recommended, the board recommended that we do a parent opt-out to make it where it's, you know, more feasible for them to participate and then have a parent be able to communicate if they didn't want to. I will say, you know, with just how difficult it is with all of this, you know, I went through several drafts with this IRB process. It was a lot, and they were very, very meticulous about the wording of everything, and they're experts in this field, so I absolutely trust what they recommended. And my teacher, Dr. Logie, she's done several, several studies herself, and this is the same as she has done for her own students. So I do think it would be okay. I genuinely think it's acceptable, and I really do think that I'll make it my best effort to make sure that the parents are absolutely informed. I try to do that in general anyway. So, yeah.
Sounds like there's multiple communication lines coming home to the parents.
Yes.
That's great. Thanks, Kelly. Any other questions on this? I think the roll call vote, please.
McMurray?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Hennessy?
For the reason I voiced earlier, I'm going to have to say no in this iteration.
Schultz?
McCollum?
Yes. All right. Consent agenda, donations, Dr. Lee.
Yes, this month, we do have $13,000 in donations. We have a donation from Nick Taylor to the school district to clear negative lunch balances in the amount of $1,000. Roberta and Erin Lower to Mom's Pantry in the amount of $1,000. Patrick and Melissa Trainer to Mom's Pantry in the amount of $2,500. Patrick and Melissa Trainer in, to the social work fund in the amount of $2,500. Lindsay Curdles to the Boys' Winter in the amount of $1,000. Imperial Pools as a wrestling sponsor in the amount of $5,000. So a lot of generous donations in the last month that is certainly appreciated.
Move to approve the donations as listed?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Much appreciated. There's $13,000 of what money. So, yes, thank you. Appreciate those who stepped up and did that. Roll call, what to approve, please.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Lamb?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes. It's communication time. Anything from the PTO?
Yes. Okay. Family Fun Night at Lincoln Trail was low bingo. About 450 to 500 people showed up. It was a blast. Mrs. Hunter and Mr. Martin were in the roll call, so thank you for that. Family Fun Night at Middletown Prairie is coming up on January 28th at 6:00 PM. It'll be movie night in the gym. Kids must be accompanied by an adult. They're watching Happy Feet. An email will be going out to parents to get tickets for the event. You need to present a ticket, but it is free of charge. And then Middletown Prairie STEM Night will be coming up in February. Watch out for that. And then nominations for board positions on PTO will be open in March, and they vote in April.
Thanks. PTO for new report. I'm going to see that soon. Foundation, right now?
Yeah, we just want to let everyone know that the annual fundraiser, the Cash Bash, the Roll Call Cash Bash is set for Friday, March 31st, starting at 6:00 PM. It's going to be at Carmen's again this year, and Felix and Fingers' Dueling Pianos will be the entertainment again. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone there at that event that night. And the, and more information about ticket sales will be coming soon. So just get on your calendars Friday, March 31st for a fun night of raising money for the foundation that helps our schools.
What do we have for this? Hey, we have one, number three, neither, tonight, and then...[1759.62] So, Mark, you know how this works, you got five minutes if you need it.
I gotta get down.
Yeah. A warning, just that can...
Happy New Year's. I hope it exceeds everyone's expectations. A number of things are going through my mind right now. I hope that they play out in a logical fashion. I'm going to start off with reading the email that you sent me. And I would like you to send those emails to these two and Colleen. They did not get them, they said, that email exchange. I think it's only fair that they get that so they can understand what I stated and how you responded. The way you responded that got under my skin. You stated, "We have explained to you multiple times that your allegations have no merit. Communist organizations do not set our curriculum." Well, I happen to know an awful lot about education and the communist infiltration on education thanks to Bill Ayers of the University of Illinois, who rose to the highest position in curriculum studies in the American Education Research Association, okay? Your textbooks are full of propaganda. Every time you pick it up and it says anthropogenic climate change is killing the planet and therefore you must give them whatever, that's a lie, it's not true. But it's promoted throughout education, it's a lie. And a communist is behind it because if you're paying any attention to the New World Order, they're using climate change to take away our rights and our money. It's a big deal. And if you're an educator, you spent your entire life reading that it's real, but it's a lie. Then you said CRT is not part of our curriculum. And I sent you the email, Max, you said CRT is not part of our curriculum. You got the email, did you read that part about Professor Tam and the U of I and CRT being a program implemented at this school? Yes or no? Because you've sat there and said it's not being read during your... Did you read that article on CRT? So, do you understand that it has been implemented in this school? Even though the article shows Lindsay Hall and Dr. Rommel on the steps with the professor saying, "We're part of the CRT program", and you're going to say it's not happening. That's a loss of confidence in you, big time. Students are not undergoing sex reassignment surgeries at school as anyone here ever said there's surgery going on at a school. Certainly, I had never said that, but you put that in print. I never said that. Show me where... Oh, by the way, when we met in that meeting room, I saw the audio and video lights flashing. Was that recorded?
Absolutely not.
Okay, good. Well, I should say, good, I couldn't care less, but if it was, I would have liked to seen it. We are not indoctrinating students. Well, I know better because I know what the curriculum has in it. We do not sponsor sex clubs. You got an LGBTQ S. club at the high school with two sponsors, are the sponsors gay? Or not? I don't know. I don't know anything about it, but you have a club that is a sex club based on sex. So, you do have that. Educators are not grooming children or sexualizing them. Do you know there are over fourteen-hundred reported actions in the Chicago public school system last year? Fourteen-hundred in the Chicago public school system. So, I don't think that... Well, I'll even go further. Where do you find pedophiles? Daycare centers and in schools because that's where the kids are. You may not know you have any, but I bet you probably do. Educators are not trained by political pedophiles. Bill Ayers, political pedophile, I coined that term.
You're under that mark.
Are you aware that Pride of the Champagne's grand marshal last year was educators? What's that tell you? Vaccinations are going to be forced on the kids if you listen to the governor. The vaccines are killing people radically. Not just myocarditis and athletes dying, but tumors, all kinds of cancers are happening. Ninety percent of the women who are pregnant lost their babies before the FDA approved it. And then forty-two-hundred people, women, lost their babies last year after getting vaccinated. The vaccine is deadly. And if this governor promotes it within the school system, it's time to understand the state of Illinois is really no less than promoting genocide on the children.
Okay. It's time for...
And do be sure we did that email exchange.
Time for board reports, board communications. We'll start with Mia.
I do have some things I want to say tonight because my level of frustration has just continued to build meeting after meeting. When I moved to Mohammed, I moved here, like a lot of people, for the schools. When I moved here, I got very involved in the PTO, worked in the classrooms, people got to know me. Worked on the dog walk, became a face that people saw in the schools and understood what was going on, roles in leadership for the community. And at that time, people started to come to me and say, you know, "My kid is struggling with this. I'm struggling as a parent with this, as a community member, I'm struggling with this." And staff members would come to me and express that they were struggling and that they needed some help. And long before I sat in this board seat, I came to the board that was sitting at the time and implored them for some action on curriculum, for some action on bullying and the assaults that were taking place, for some action on class sizes, on diversity, on student privacy with respect to technology that we were bringing in, with financial responsibilities about going one-to-one and doing that without a plan that... for replacing those at the time. And unfortunately, I didn't get any response from that board. I got the thanks, the head nod and the, you know, the formal, "We appreciate you showing up to share your thoughts with us." And so I thought, you know, all of these people came to me and said, "We need a voice. We need someone there who's willing to be our voice." And so I ran for the school board. When I ran for the school board, I ran with the intention of creating a space for those students who were asking for help, for those staff members who were asking for help, for the teachers who were asking for help, for the parents who were asking for help and for the community members who wanted a voice. And I thought that it was important to create a space so that we could have a collective discussion about the mutual life that we build together as a community. And in the four years that I've served on this board, it's been different than what I expected when I ran. I am sitting here four years later with the same problems that I stood up at that podium and talked to the board about with no movement on them. The same problems with bullying that kids are facing. Kids telling the same stories about the challenges that they're having, the bullying that they're facing, the assaults that are happening, the drug problem that they encounter. And for years, I've now heard, "But we don't tell the adults because we don't feel like anyone helps us." And so as adults, we may feel like we're helping, but the kids tell us differently. That's a problem. Please from community members about discussion items that this board could take on, in my opinion, go unheard and unadded to agendas. We're in a situation where the superintendent and the board president control what gets put on an agenda. And if they don't want to talk about it, in my experience, it just doesn't make it to the agenda. You can ask in a meeting for it, it doesn't make it. You can ask per the rules that they've set up to get it on there and it doesn't make it. And it's supremely frustrating because it's not just things that I want, it's things that the community is coming to me because they want a voice in it. I have seen shocking things, like this school board vote against a measure that would ensure we don't have any appearance of impropriety through quid pro quo's. So, members of the school board went up to Chicago on the taxpayer dime for an IASB weekend to the tune of twelve to twenty thousand dollars, somewhere in there, and beforehand voted against a measure that would prevent us from going out to dinner and being wined and dined by companies that then come and ask to contract with the school district. This is shocking to me. The appearance of impropriety and the potential real quid pro quo's are dangerous for this district. But this school board voted against that because we want to go up and... I'm not really sure. I went on one, saw everything that I needed to see, haven't been back since because I don't think it's an appropriate use of the taxpayers' money. But we do find time to add things like multiple meetings that are focused on giving away assets of the district. We had two, three, maybe even four meetings on giving away thirteen acres, on giving away Middletown Park. We kept being told that we were doing that because we are trading partial use of tennis courts. To date, there are no tennis courts, the district has not seen any benefit from that. And at the time, those of us board members who wanted some sense of security about giving those pieces of land away in the form of if what we were told didn't happen, we would get that land back, we were told, "You've got to just trust them." The tennis courts are going up. Tennis courts are not going up, they aren't up now. I will believe it when I see it. But it is our job as fiduciaries of this district to protect the assets and we did not do that, in my opinion. We've held multiple meetings about expanding a TIF for the expansion of this road that's going in. In my opinion, the district traded a one-point-five-million-dollar... We owed one-point-five-million dollars to three-million dollars to put in a road would have been our responsibility as the developers of this site. And what we have given up is well over ten-million dollars over the life of that TIF. That is not appropriate for the taxpayers. We just keep asking the taxpayers to burden this and that road is going to also have a secondary impact of bringing more houses, more kids, more students to school buildings that are already busting at the seams. And so, what I found was that there don't seem to be the types of discussions that go on that I anticipated, that were focused on kids and their needs, staff members and how we appropriately support them, and community members and how we do this to the best of our ability respecting that the community is the one who funds these issues. I've heard it said in this boardroom that I don't think the board members are ever going to come together. And I am to the point where I actually believe that. I believe that because my priorities have not changed from the time that I decided to run for this board. My priorities are still trying to look out for kids, do our best for children, to best support the staff. And when they come to us and tell us that they're in dire need, rather than critiquing them for the way that they do it because we have a culture that forces them to feel like the retribution will come and they can't have open conversations with the board, we gaslight and sideline into a discussion about how they did it rather than solving the problem that they came to us with. I don't believe that we are going to address curriculum. Curriculum has been a blank spot since before I joined the board. Four years later, it's still a blank spot. And before the gaslighting starts and I'm told, "Look at the website", I have looked at the website, what you see on the website primarily are learning standards and learning standards is not curriculum. In the time that we have had directors of curriculum, this district has spent over a million dollars in salary. And if I look at that website, I don't feel like that value is translated into the work that we do. But we don't have discussions in this room about that. We have kids who talk to us about bullying, but we don't even put it on the agenda for discussion here. I've been trying since I took this seat on the board to have just the creation of a space for people to come and tell us about their experiences with bullying and diversity and inclusion. And this board will even create a space for those discussions to be had, let alone have discussions in this boardroom about those issues. And diversity has become a buzzword that we use to whip people up into a frenzy because it's something that everyone has their own definition of and we take advantage of that and we say it's bad to talk about it when really, instead of using labels that shut down conversation, what we should be doing is understanding that children and our employees are coming to us with real problems and asking for us to solve them and we are just ignoring them. And there's no label you can slap on that that's going to make that feel okayed. And I don't think that this board is serious about the types of priorities that I have when it comes to curriculum and protecting kids and protecting staff and shoring up those items and making sure staff has appropriate support. And the reason why I say that is we just canceled a study session that was scheduled in January because there was nothing to discuss. Nothing to discuss. I find that shocking. We've had discussions about bullying, we've had discussions about curriculum, but there was nothing to discuss. And in point of fact, that the board had decided that that meeting was supposed to be about talking about district goals. And you'll see it on the agenda tonight, but it's only because I followed up after the agenda items had been released and said, "We did, as a board, decide we were going to talk about district goals in January. This is the last meeting that we could do that, we should put that on there." Now, do I think that a real discussion about goals is going to go on shoehorned in between all of the other things that we have listed here tonight? No, I don't. And do I think that we're seriously going to take a look at that? I do not because the study session would have been the place to do that. And instead, we just canceled it because we didn't have anything to do. The board decided that we were going to have that meeting and either the president of the board or the superintendent decided that they would cancel that meeting. The board is supposed to act as board. One board member doesn't have any more power than the other and the superintendent does not speak for the board. It is supremely frustrating to be hand-tied by those two individuals who will refuse to put things on agendas and refuse to bring things up for even discussion of the board if they don't want to. I'm having difficulty because we have all of these very real problems. We have students coming to us this year in pain. And I hear from the superintendent that we're going to sit back and listen, which I can appreciate. We have very real problems that need to be addressed. And while we sit back and listen when it comes to kids in pain, a lack of curriculum, the only deliverable, by the way, that the district is really responsible for, we don't have. I read about going to chamber meetings, meeting with developers, meeting with community members, all which is fine and good if we had the core of what we're supposed to be doing done. But we don't. And so, sitting back and listening while kids are in pain is not appropriate, in my opinion. And we find the time to talk to community members, developers, special interests. We find the time to push referendum that the community have already told us that they're not interested in and push that through in a manner that doesn't add anything to the discussion and ensures that it's going to fail again, leaving us to continue with class sizes that are bursting at the seam. And then we hear in the community that phone calls are being made asking people to run for school board. Okay, I get it, we don't like the dissenting voices. But dissension is important because this is supposed to be a system of checks and balances. The school board is supposed to check the power of the superintendent, not just be a rubber stamp for everything that goes on. And there's no clear indication to me that we are just a rubber stamp in the fact that school board is supposed to direct the superintendent through policy. And this superintendent and the previous superintendent also came and weighed in on whether or not they wanted us to implement said policy. It's a little bit like letting the fox in the hen house when the person you're supposed to oversee with policy gets to decide whether or not those policies... when the person you're supposed to oversee with policy gets to decide whether or not those policies should be considered or recommended or adopted. We have school board members who are enraged. And for two meetings, we had to hear about the school code, the school code with respect to who sits in these seats and where people sleep at night, and which lights are turned on, and which driveways we park our cars in. And we're supposed to take the word of some people who own multiple houses and not take the word of other board members who own multiple houses, the best of my ability because we either like some people and their agendas better, or we don't. But I am sitting in this seat, not really sure how I'm supposed to take one person's word for it over another person's word for it. If they say, "This is the house that I spend my time in and it's my residence," I don't go around town like a crazy peepetopam looking in windows and making sure that that's happening. And quite honestly, we have real important business to be taking care of, and I can't believe that's how we're spending our time. That same school code that has that language about whether or not you can sit in a school board seat also has language about the responsibility of school board members, about retaining records, reporting unemployment, adopting and enforcing all necessary rules equally and fairly, appointing teachers and fixing salaries, developing and implementing policies for recruitment and hiring of minorities, direct what textbooks will be used, direct what branches of study should be taught, and what apparatus will be used. Sounds like curriculum to me. So I'm left to wonder, if we're so focused on school code when it comes to certain parts of it, did we just not read all of it? Did we not comprehend the rest of what followed? Are we actually only interested in pushing school code when it supports the agenda that I'm pushing? I have my own theories on that, and I think that's what's going on. All the while, kids are telling us they're in pain and they need help. Teachers are telling us that their classes are busting at the seams and they don't have the resources. Teachers have to go online and ask for GoFundMes because they don't have enough money to staff their classes appropriately. And we sit in this room and we talk about whose bed lies where. It's a shame. And I'm just not having it anymore, quite honestly. Before I was on the board, I used to come to meetings, I used to watch school board meetings. They were five, 10, 30 minutes at the most. Very little discussion, motions would pass, contracts would come. No discussion was had. It would vote through 7-0. But in the reality is that in the decade that I've lived here, I've watched this school struggle. I've watched the real issues that we're facing as a town and as a nation impact this small town. And I think we're losing that battle. And I sat in this seat because I wanted to actually make change that would help this district change its trajectory. But none of that happened. And without changing the trajectory, I have real fear about where we're heading. And so I think if I were to predict, I think you'll see more trailers coming your way. I think we'll see larger class sizes. I think we'll see the asks of teachers get larger and heavier and more untenable. I think we should expect to see talk of shorter school weeks. We should watch for, you know, other ways to manipulate taxpayers into feeling like if we don't do something, then the children are going to suffer. But for me, this is a result because in the moment that we needed to act, we didn't. We didn't change trajectory, we didn't change our focus, we didn't focus on what it was that was important. And I imagine maybe in May, when the board turns over, this will go back to what it was before. I hope not, but I have no reason to believe with Max and out there making calls and asking people to run for the school board that they aren't people who maybe think similarly. Because the rubber stamp vote is a danger to this district and everyone who pays for this district. I'm tired of seeing issues swept under the rug. I hope that they won't be. I worry that they will be. And I worry that, you know, we're going to, as soon as this board turns over, see those contracts that we were supposed to discuss after the fall come back to this board and mysteriously have not made it back to the agenda, come back in May or June after the board has turned over so that those folks that wind and dine us up in Chicago can come and without any real discussion have their contracts confirmed and pushed through this district. I've worked really hard to stay true to who I was when I asked for this job. It's been difficult, but I feel like I can hold my head up high and I feel like I have done that. And the Mohammed Seymour that I see is vastly different today than it was a decade ago when I moved here. I hear from parents for the first time that they regret moving to Mohammed, that the school system is not what they expected. I have parents talk about how their children are thriving in other districts and people are moving out. And I've witnessed how the important things in my, to my value, my priorities, have taken a backseat on this board. And as I look at the rest of this agenda, I see those types of things continuing. I see no real discussion about the things that are important to this district making it to this agenda. And so tonight, I'm going to actually take a stand because I can. And I'm not interested anymore in this performance art that's being done. I don't want to participate in it anymore. I refuse to participate in it anymore. And so tonight, I appreciate you listening. I came here tonight so that my voice and my reasons could be heard and people couldn't make up stories about what it is that I'm doing and why I'm doing it. And I thought it was important because that has happened time and time again. And a person having their own voice and being able to have their own message is vitally important and it's something we should be teaching our kids. And so I came here tonight to use mine, and I thank you for listening. And now I'm going to go. I'm not going to have food for the kids in 60 days.
I enjoyed that performance art, so I will go next.
Okay.
I drive to work in Champaign, and I drive to work pretty early in the morning. And every morning, I am behind a Mohammed Seymour bus before the sun even rises. And it just, every time I'm behind that bus, I think, "Our bus drivers are incredible. They're wonderful people. They're the first face that our kids see." And then we were at a basketball game last night, late at night. Again, another bus driver, again, working hard to get our kids back and forth safely. And I just, I feel like that is something that, once again, we need to be acknowledging the people who are not in front of our kids in the classroom, in front of our kids in the administrator offices. Those people are all doing great things. But people like bus drivers are making such an impact on our kids' lives that I truly hope if people can just have their kids say, "Thank you, and I appreciate you." I just, I think they need to hear that because it's a job that is a tough job. I also wanted to clarify one point from Mrs. Hennessy's comments that we did not actually say that in January study session, we were going to come back and talk about goals. The actual comment was that we were going to revisit it after the beginning of the year. Technically, that could be in December, but after the beginning of the year. And there were a lot of other things that she said that I wish she would have stayed. And I think the biggest feeling that I have about that is that I am truly sorry that someone feels that traumatized by their experience on the board because it shouldn't be that. So I hope that that made her feel a little bit better.
Mr. Lamb, anything for you tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome everybody back from break and hope you had a good rest of the Christmas and New Years. And I just wanted to thank, Sonny mentioned the bus drivers. I just want to thank everyone for pouring into our kiddos every day. We are here for all of you and we support you all in everything you do, so please know that. And we just look forward to building on our district going forward. Yeah, that's about it. Thanks.
I just wanted to add a couple of things. Some of it, maybe add my comments or some things I've commented throughout the year so far. As far as CRT being in our district, I stand by the comments that I made to the speaker on email and in person. If anybody has experienced with CRT actually being implemented in our district, I would ask to follow a normal chain, talk to the teacher, talk to the building leader, talk to the superintendent of the board. That's not a program we are actively pursuing in Mohammed Seymour schools. The Chicago trip was brought up. That is primary education program. I've been on several times. We get lots of good information. We've networked with other districts, our staff and our board members that go. They've been rich and they were very back things that have been very helpful to the district, so I'll throw that in there. There was a $10 million given up by the TIF floated. I'm not sure where that came from. That's not accurate. But I'll say this. I just, in summary, I want to get a couple of the comments we're on. We have never claimed to be a perfect school district. We're not perfect. We're full of people and people get a little messy sometimes. People aren't perfect. A lot of our administrators, they're great people. I love every one of them. But unfortunately, not any more perfect than I am. But you know what? The people that work here love your kids and they've got a passion for education. And we say every day, "You are best." Now, is there varied opinions on what our best is, what it should look like? There is. And I know Ms. Hennessy's frustrated because maybe we haven't, as a board, entirely agreed was not the thing she wanted to do or that she felt was important. And, you know, we face that every day in life, right? There's people that have different opinions and we do about different things. But I will say this. I will stand behind the intent of our educators, administrators, and the Association of Mohammed Seymour Schools, that we work hard to do a great job every day. Every once in a while, I hear about people fleeing from Mohammed. Numbers just don't show that, okay? I'm sorry, but people are willing to come here. And one reason they come, they want to come here is the school district, which again, I'll say, is not perfect. There's many people who care and want to do a great job for kids. Appreciate each and every one of them and the work that y'all do every day. With Mrs. Hennessy leaving, that takes us down to three board members. We've had a considerable discussion for the last 30 days with legal counsel and regional superintendent, all those folks, legal counsel and regional superintendent, both affirm the fact that we are a five-person board now and support the action. You know, two folks moved out of the area they were elected in, sir, into the other part. And there's only two parts. They didn't find out the township, but they went to one of those areas. You can move anywhere you want in one of those areas if you're in that area, which can't change. I could move up on 2600 and keep my board's seat. And it's the act of the move, and we have established your primary rhythms, that vacates the seat. It's not Max McComb, it's not the regional superintendent, it's not Shelley Anderson. It's the act of the move, okay? The other thing we talked about, and we've had some discussions with the president of the Association of Regional Superintendents on this, is what is the quorum we'll go to this point for our board since we're a five-person board? His thoughts on that is that we are a mounted three-person quorum. We still have three people here, so we're continuing to conduct the business tonight. Shelley also researched that in some cases where that, where boards have operated that way in the state. So we feel confident in what we're doing tonight and we can move forward with three board members here. We've got some important things on the agenda. I think how they're referencing the fact that we've got to get some of the food service, or we can all go on bagged lunches March 1st, which, you know, my kid loves, but not every student wants that. And of course, we've got students who depend on lunch here, right? And all that stuff. We're going to go continue on with business. And we are at financial update with Heather.
I have nothing extraordinary to report. It's very much in line with the budget. So I'm, you guys saw the report, so if you have any questions, just let me know. Remedies and expenses are both in line.
Any questions for Heather? Hearing none. Christine North, our director of support services, sent us a report, and she is here. Anything to add to your report?
I do not. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but otherwise, I'm here tonight.
Any questions for Christine? She gave us a lot of good information. No, I've seen heads, not as well. Dr. Rommel is not here tonight. Anything in her report, we can either ask Dr. Lee or Christine to maybe try to cover it. She's a real, real person. Just ask her.
Yeah. Real quickly, in Dr. Rommel's report, she's worked with Mrs. Hunter and Mr. Martin, who have worked with staff at LT, and they have come up with a creative solution to take care of the issue of not being within compliance. Well, we're in compliance because we have a waiver, but not in compliance with the spirit of the law with regard to offering PE at our 305 building. So they have a solution in there. We're not asking for action tonight, but we just wanted you to read about that. And in Dr. Rommel's absence, I did ask Mrs. Hunter to attend this evening, and she brought Mr. Martin and Mrs. Keeble with her as well. And we appreciate that because they were very helpful in coming up with this solution as well. It's not a perfect solution. It does involve a portable classroom at Lincoln Trail, which is, we've been talking about being in probably need of in the near future. It does also involve adding a PE teacher and then Mrs. Keeble changing around her curriculum as well. If you've ever been by Mrs. Keeble's classroom, they're not sitting in their account. There is, there is.
Y'all show it, yeah.
There is, there is movement involved in our music already, but this just solidifies that on paper and probably tweaks some things as well. So that's a solution that we have. If that makes any relation to their stomachs, we can go back to the drawing board or we can continue to utilize the waiver.
I love that you threw outside the box, so thank you for that. Just a couple of questions. I just want to make sure I have it clear in my mind. So we'll hire an additional PE teacher, so we'll have two PE teachers. We'll have PE in the gym and PE in the...
That's a great question. So we're looking at some options. That's kind of one of those like down in the weeds things that we would need to figure out. Steve and I during our monthly meetings have talked about some different options to how to logistically make it come together. With the addition of that portable at Lincoln Trail, that could potentially become that PE space, depending on, I've never purchased or looked into portable before, so this will be, you know, something...
It has to reinforce floor.
So we really need like a big rectangle. And you could maybe look at having the PE class out in the portable. We've also tossed around the idea of taking Mrs. Keeble's existing music space. If you haven't been to Lincoln Trail in a minute, she has the old band room, since band is now housed at the junior high. We've kind of split that room into a multipurpose type conference room on the other side. If we open that space up, there's kind of a portable wall in there now. That's actually the original gym to Lincoln Trail. So if we were to kind of reconfigure the ceiling and do some things with electrical, with lighting, we could take that back to a gym space and look at moving Mrs. Keeble's music and movement, as I'm loosely calling that, whatever, you know, to be officially named. But that, of course, also needs space. whatever, you know, to be officially named, but that of course also needs space for movement. So we would have to keep that in mind when we're looking at that. Portable spaces that we just make sure that we get something that works for what we're trying to do.
And this would be in place of music. They're not doing music and movement and traditional music?
It would be the same class. It would be, I mean, honestly, it would be a lot of what it already is, but it would be movement as a vehicle to get students.
Yeah.
Movement would become more of an important factor than it already is.
The change behind it would be that, I guess, more in the intent. The intent would be for kids to be up and moving through that medium of music versus looking at kind of maybe what the original intent back many years ago when, you know, elementary music was originally added to that curriculum.
So we'll be shifting from Ozzy Osbourne to Scott. They're in common here, but yeah, we'll use the attitude.
But that's the, the kids will have PE two assigned days a week and then music and movement will be one of those rotating classes to make the third.
Excellent. Okay, so with your schedule, sorry, I might be getting into the weeds. This is going to come back, right? Oh, I mean, my only question is with your schedule and with teacher prep times, is that going to work okay as far as like set PE times and then rotating other?
That's why I think we have to pull out the PE class and have those scheduled. So for example, one classroom may have PE on Mondays and Fridays, whereas another class may have it on Tuesday, Wednesday. Just kind of have to see how that shakes out. Currently with one PE teacher, we would be looking at her teaching 62 classes, which is not possible. We looked at that over the summer and it was not possible. So now adding that second person to be able to do that, so there will be different courses or, you know, different schedule for each PE teacher. And then the other three days, they'll pick up that third day of PE through the music and movement class. And then the other two days would be the rotating art and steam. Probably pulling the library time out of the rotating schedule too and have that almost be like its own rotating schedule because library classes are really hard to make up whenever we have Monday holidays like what we had yesterday. So if that rotates, then she's not always having to make those classes up. So there's kind of, it's definitely a puzzle kind of coming together.
I hate to bring this up, and maybe this is not the right time. Do we need to have a conversation about contract language?
We already have.
Okay.
So that's one of the things when I met with Dr. Rommel and kind of looked at the different options, we looked at where can we add plan time for teachers because that encore time is directly correlated to that's teacher plan time, teacher prep time. So we are adding plan time, but Mr. Martin is able, not my Mr. Martin, Middletown Martin, is able to add some time here for teachers at Middletown so that there's still that parity there for K-5 teachers. Yep. No good question.
All right.
Yeah, thanks for all the work in this. I'm trying to make something work.
It was a lot of, so PE. And just kind of spitballing ideas and Google Docs started of multiple people adding ideas and truly putting everything out on the table and then just picking apart what, no, that won't work, but maybe that could work with this. And then coming down to some, I mean, really kind of three options that would work that our building leadership team met, which is, you know, represented from each of the grade levels plus Sue as the encore representative and represented from special ed just to kind of look at that because after you look at it so many times, you don't, exactly. So that perspective from them of, oh, so how would this play out or what could this look like? And that was their idea to include the rotating library schedule. So I think that's something we can embed.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Well, why don't we think it outside of the box then?
There's no box.
No box, keep it thinking outside.
No, just the portable box.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a lot of work.
So would you like to press proceed with this?
I would love to know more. Yeah, I mean, yes, I personally think it's a great idea. How do you feel, Mrs. Keeble?
You know, I live outside the box. I mean, it made sense that all the, because it was very clear that somebody was going to step up to do this work and I think anybody would do it. But it made more sense to music compared to library or ours. You just, there's just more of a connection.
Movement and library doesn't make sense. Especially given what your curriculum already is, what you're already doing in your classroom. And we asked the kids, one of the ideas, just to, you know, kind of talk about what we flushed out was, do we just add another encore class that's movement-based? And so Mr. Martin and I have a Pastries with Pals meeting that we have once a month. And we talked to the kids about what, like what sorts of things do you like about PE? What would you want us to see us add? What could another class sort of be like? Talking with, it was interesting. We had several kids that were here at Middletown that had the health class and the ABL class. So they offered some perspective on that. And then we had students that were brand new to Mohammed that had maybe experienced classes other places or had PE different places. And I think the best summation was one student said, we just want to move. We love everything about PE except the Pacer test. And they just want to move. So I think this gives them really what they want. We feel like it's meeting those needs. We don't disagree. They do need to move. And hopefully the solution of getting us to PE three days a week, we'll see benefits in other areas too.
Thanks for your hard work and kind of working through solutions on that. Just see what we can do down here. Dr. Lee, anything else from Dr. Rommel's report?
Okay.
Very good. Well then, it's your turn.
Yes, just a couple of policy reminders. We did within our policy manual update staff in August about several of the sections from, several policies from section seven. And then Mr. Martin sent out a survey last week. I'll meet with our assistant principals just to make sure as we move forward going into next year that several of the policies from section seven then reference back to our handbooks just to make sure that we're in line with that. Also, as a result of section six, our five essential survey will be taken by this time next month.
Very good. Okay. Didn't want to regular this. So under regular business, under unfinished business, we have setting district goals, actually.
Yes, in looking at what are some common or typical board level goals or district goals, this is something that is fairly common with one of the facilitators as far as ways to look at being broad across your goals when you're looking at it. So if you look at these, this is a sample and it is common. And again, our goals are what we'll achieve and our strategies is what's going to be our priority work. And this just kind of spells out some of that and very common, you generally have a goal about student growth and achievement, your supportive learning environment, your district school and staff effectiveness, engaging your families and community. And then the fifth one is always when we look at our resource efficiencies or when we're looking at our financing facilities. So if you look into this a little bit more, then it talks about what those strategies are and then your key performance measure will be established for all goals and strategies to be able to monitor and then report your progress. So once, you know, goals are set and we put together those different strategies and then we have indicators, then what I would suggest then from that point on is that then we create a balanced scorecard of those indicators. And what I've worked with staff in the past then is that what we can do is essentially make each one of our strategies and indicators look like a stoplight, for instance. So if we're where we want to be, there's a green dot next to it, we've got a yellow dot and we've got a red dot. And then we continue to look through on ways to improve that. So, you know, when you look at these sample strategies, for instance, some things like, for instance, with our student growth and achievement, well, certainly, you know, being in the buildings, we're hearing a lot of talk about attendance right now. And certainly it's district-wide and we've seen that, you know, we all hope that we can get our attendance rates back to pre-COVID level. And I was at a principal's advisory council meeting this morning at the high school. And what they were talking about in there was, you know, Mr. Benedict was really talking to our students about, you know, we need some ideas from you guys too about what are some things that would help you to, and just try and get some student voice involved in that. So it was a very powerful meeting that he had this morning with several students at there. And certainly I know that at LT that they've been working on attendance this year as well. Generally, attendance falls under your goal two of your supportive learning environment because that makes it better. But I would also argue that we need to take a look at that on goal one because when we take a look at our student achievement, the number one indicator of student achievement is attendance. So, you know, I think that those could fall under either one of those. And then when we, when Dr. Rommel spoke to us in November about achievement, certainly one thing that our curriculum department is really focused on this year is our achievement levels, getting them back to what they were pre-COVID, but then also our low-income population and our EL population. We need to focus in on that in order to increase that achievement as well. As far as goal two with our supportive learning environment, you know, our five essential surveys can really, you know, be very telling. And when you go through and look at that, our students feel safe in the hallways, they feel safe at school, they feel safe in the bathrooms. And not all of them, I mean, this isn't a panacea, but when you look at our five essential surveys, that research or the data shows us that. Other things to go along with our supportive learning environment would be the diversity teams at each one of our buildings. All of our, making sure that all of our policies, our section seven of our policy manual lines up with our handbooks because all of that is from the supportive environment as well. And then as you guys remember from a month or so ago, then I will also at the March meeting talk about every two years, we have to review our bullying policy. And then that looks at data. So I'll meet with our assistant principals and get data that's involved with that. And then also Mrs. Northrup, because any bullying complaints that become very reformal through policy end up in the Northrup. So along with that supportive learning environment, we'll talk at the March meeting with regard to policy seven, colon, one eighty. The, then we'll also continue to look at the data that comes along with those different policies through five essentials. When you look at goal three with our school staff and effectiveness, you know, when I talk to you guys about listening and learning and coming up with different themes, certainly the number one theme is space right now. And that's no secret. I could have told you that before I even applied for this position. But staffing continues to be something that we're concerned with. And especially to Mrs. Northrup, especially is struggling with some different positions and things like that. So we'll continue to monitor our staff retention as we move through that as well as leader retention. And I think that it's important that not only do we look at the score report card, but we drill down into that retention. And that can tell us a lot more too when we're looking at why are people are leaving? Is it retirements? Is it traveling spouses and things of that nature? So we would take a look at that as well. But then we'll continue to try to attract student teachers. And then as you know, that through the contract negotiations, we do have some incentives that we can put into place for some of our part-filled positions as well. So those are some things, as well as making sure that we're getting out, back out to all of the job fairs and things like that as far as trying to attract great staff and keep the ones that we have. And again, continue to collaborate with MSEA on that. And we meet every other week to problem solve and continue to look at ways we can collaborate. As far as engaged families, I think that one thing that we've done with the business community is our workplace learning program has continued to look at ways that we can get involved with the community. Dr. Rommel does a nice job with the curriculum nights. Our various buildings have activities in the evenings. We've got visitors back in the classroom, back in school. We've got, I just, Thursday and down in the lunchroom here, I saw several parents were in there for lunch. And continue to be visible in the communities as educational leaders. As far as goal five, we're seeing with current administration that we've seen an increase in revenue, but we still, that's under our resources and our facilities. So we still need to fix or continue to seek ways to fix our space issues and continue to try to work with the village to take a look at not only ways that we can increase REAB within not being households. So those are just some, when you look at what your traditional goals across are, those are generally the five, five common themes that come along with that. And then as we continue to work more on these, certainly when we originally discussed this, Mrs. McMurray, you brought up that we really need to take a look at, you know, stakeholder input, right? And talk about what these look like. But in the meantime, what we've done is, and actually this fall, we did it. Our building principals had five-year plans and in order for us to have a conversation about that, they inputted their five-year plans into this essential document and then that's what we've kind of taken a look at.
Well, that's what I was going to come at. Like we heard these great presentations from our administrators about what their goals were. I feel like that feeds directly into what our overarching goals are going to be.
Right. And then their goals are a result of their data that they have, right?
Right.
Of their score report card data as well as the five essentials and their test scores. So when we look at, I just think that we need to be broad at the top and then kind of come down and then have conversations at the bullying level.
Talk a little bit about the next steps from here.
Well, I think that the next steps from here would be that we continue at our level to work with our building administrators that are working through their faculty meetings with their building leadership teams and their department level chairs and their grade level chairs to continue to look at ways to implement at the building level to help with their data. Because everybody's data is going to be a little bit different, but it really, I mean, it's all pretty simple as far as, I mean, everybody's, you saw it in November, seven, they all talk about.
Right. And I appreciate that, that all of the data is being seen as important because it's easy to fall back on IAR or one SIRX test, but if you're in first grade, you're not taking IAR. And so if you're being held accountable for some assessment that is not even relevant to your kids, I appreciate that we're looking at, you know, per building, what is relevant specifically to your students. So I, yeah, I think that's, that's key.
So in a nutshell, I would just envision us continuing to take a look at these things as we go into the spring. And then I will come back, you know, in a couple of months with proposals from, to do a full-blown strategic planning. And then, because that's what we need, right?
Right. Okay. So you feel like that's a couple of months down the road?
Yeah, to implement in the fall, the process, just because I've been in places where they've tried to really fast-track it. And if you, you know, if you try to fast-track it, it just doesn't make a lot of sense.
So one of the things, speaking of getting input from stakeholders, is the space piece. And we've had conversations about, you know, how do we get feedback from our community about space? But then also could this tie into the strategic planning piece? Like, I don't know how that might, that's, I don't even answer. That's just ponder that and see if there might be a way we can.
Right. Because the space piece is much bigger than, it's very key, but is much bigger than, you know, four strategic planning sessions of five different goals that you're spending, you know, let's say six hours in various tables doing exercises of SWOT analysis and things like that where we need to cut a wider swath with regard to giving feedback on the space issue.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Policy six, colon, three hundred graduation requirements.
Yes.
I came to this last month in the first reading.
Yeah, that was the first reading in November and you'll see in your board packets that the only change is that you can see that provided they finish six semesters of high school and meet all graduation requirements as opposed to seven. That is up for action this evening.
That is up for action. Recommendation, I think, is we improve the changes. The policy says, colon, three hundred. It's presented as your motion to do that.
Awesome.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just further discussion or comments? Roll public, please.
Henderson Schultz McMurray, yes.
Yes. Yes, that was up for two months prior. It was brought up at last minutes meeting that the, the actual worksheets weren't in there. They have been added. Tonight is a, a first reading. If you have any questions or concerns as you look through those, please, please let me know and, and we can talk through them.
That will come back for approval next month?
Yes.
Any other thoughts or kind of something else?
Anything to add?
No.
Okay. That's all pretty standard.
Okay. Heather, talk to us about lunch and breakfast.
Yeah.
Food service.
Sorry about that. My second thing was how are we feeding kids? Sorry about that. Okay. Okay. At the last board meeting, I was told we wanted to get rid of Arbor. Before, I was trying to make sure I had an option before I gave them the sixty-day notice to make sure we still have food. In the meantime, they gave me the sixty-day notice on January third because I was not giving them the increased pricing. So I was elated because that took out some of my job. I didn't have to do all of the sixty-day formalities and I had already had two vendors that were putting things together for me, which were Airmark, who we used to have, and then Quest, who has had great reviews, including Dr. Lee has had them before. And listening to them is, it's a different approach, a more a homemade approach. And they actually came in lower than Airmark. So a lot of that, Airmark just said that they could not be competitive at this time with such a short time span. So they said they would, they will bid after this next year. So, so my recommendation tonight is to go to Quest. We do have the money. It will still be within our reimbursement because I have applied for supply chain. We have, we have some supply chain money that we can get. So we have been given that. Not to mention the fact that the federal funding went up as well, which is the reason that Arbor kept coming back and asking for more money is just the quality of the service. We're not there. So anyways, so tonight, my recommendation for the rest of this school year, we can only do it now for the rest of this school year, is to go with Quest at the pricing that they've provided. And then what I've been instructed by ISB is I'll go back in May and I will ask for another emergency contract because we don't have the time. The food service bidding process is a lot different than the normal bidding process. So basically I will be coming back in May for a year-long emergency, which is, it's a non-competitive, but we can actually weigh out our options, see where we're at. And even with, just so you know.
And the regular site from after that?
Yes.
And then May, we'll also probably have a proposal from OPA.
Yes. OPA came and talked to us, another homemade option. So they just did not have, they just did not have the time to put it together once we heard about the.
Do they like, do you guys like taste test?
Actually, it's kind of funny. In the new RFP, because Illinois has always been under an IFB. I'm, I'm just learning this. So, because food service, I've always had in-house food service, so that's why this is all kind of, you know me, but an IFB is what we have had in the past, which is just strictly low bid. So that's how we actually ended up with Arbor in the first place, they underbid Airmark. And it doesn't matter, anything else doesn't matter. Now they're coming out with, even though it has not been put out on ISB's website, so I'm hoping it is by the time we bid, it's an, it's an RFP, which they have like certain criteria. So you mark the importance of all, you're the criteria of what you want and taste testing is what you know. So, yeah. So anyways.
I thought you were raising your hand, Max.
So, yeah, so that will be a whole nother process that we will learn how to go through, but it, it, it's interesting. It puts a little bit more than just price in there so that somebody can't come in the first year and, you know, underbid everybody and then have a crappy, you know, results. So anyways, so I'm kind of excited about talking to.
Can you talk a little bit about how this is going to be an increase in price, but then we also anticipate that the increase in usership will.
Yes. Yes. Oh, yes. Yes. We, it will be covered with the additional federal funding, but, and the supply chain money, but also we have a very low participation rate, probably because of the quality. We're at thirty percent. I mean, I can tell you both, OPA.
Do you have any idea what we used to be at?
Around sixty.
Yeah.
So we cut it in half. So the, the increase can also help us as well as we start to, you know, sell more food. So that, you know, that, I mean, pretty much all three vendors said they just could not believe how low it was.
They were very excited about potential for growth.
Oh, yes.
And increase in sales.
Well, and actually I will tell you, in these numbers that Quest put together, they're counting on that increase for themselves. So they have included in there is a twenty percent increase in their projections just so that they can break even at this point. So, so to me that sounds good because that means they're going to really try to make this feel good and make it so that the kids want to eat and get motivated.
We have. This whole thing is kind of trying to work with the other company.
Yeah.
We've gotten bad reviews since day one. We've gotten excuses from them since day one.
Well, we're also going to start having something I talked to ISB about that we probably needed is have like a, a kind of like a student committee, faculty committee to get, give feedback on the food service processes too. So make this a little bit.
Is there a chef involved in this also?
Yeah, I read that.
A what?
A chef.
Oh, yes. Yes. I, Dr. Lee could probably tell you more about that because he had a chef at Menaca with them, so.
He was in-house between the two buildings, did all the, the recipes and things like that.
Wow. And then. I'm thinking like, I'm seeing like a dual credit class happening here.
In workplace, you have, and, how do you say it, OPA? They, they have the same thing. They have a chef as well, which has training videos. And also, you know, this is going to hopefully help us recruit more people for the positions because they said they enjoy doing it. They learn things to take home. You know, they learn how to cook like real food, not just putting it in the microwave or whatever, putting the pop tart in.
Sure.
But, you know, I mean, they can actually learn.
And well-encouraged to be really.
Get more experience, learn different things, but I don't know. It just, I was hungry after these videos and excited because it, it sounded like, you know, a, a very different approach, but a better approach to me.
Yeah. I know there's a lot of kids that thank you, including my daughter. She'd love to be a part of that community.
Okay. I'd love to be a part of that.
Okay. So the recommendation is that we approve an emergency contract with Quest for the remainder this year as presented, your motion to do that.
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there other questions for Heather?
How soon will this start?
Do what?
How soon will this start?
The beginning of March.
What, we march over tonight?
Yeah, March sixth is the first Monday afterwards. So, yeah, so, but I, you know, I wanted to get this approved before I started talking to both vendors to get things ironed out because like we, we've told a lot of our food service staff, because a lot of the staff we really enjoy at the schools and the principals do and have good relationships with, that Quest will actually interview them as well and get the feedback from them so that, you know, they can come over and work for Quest if, if they desire to.
Great.
Awesome. Okay, we've got a motion, a second, any further questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Yes.
I hope it's good. I might start eating at all the schools.
Roll call, please.
Schultz, Lamb?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Tennessee, McCollum?
Yes. So let's talk about the freezer request over here.
Yes, we have.
Do you need to heat that food?
We have to keep it cold and in the seats here too, if you have any questions, but any more detailed questions, but basically the high school cooler freezer was not operating anymore in the way that it should, just because it's aged. Mechanical issues and leaking and air, and air filtration.
Infiltration.
Infiltration, yes. So we had a bid and KEC Design LLC actually came in with the low bid. That's a low bid plus alternate A, which is just some additional shelving, new shelving rather than using old at eighty-two thousand eight seventy-five. And I, just to add to that a little bit, I am in the midst of applying for, for some of our coolers and freezers, but then also you will see next month, there's going to be a subsidiary fund. I finished it this month, a fund tenants' food service, which will enable us to use whatever reserve is there for food service items. So it's going to be a restricted amount, but that's, you know, but that we'll actually know how much is in there for us to spend in the future. And right now it's about half, about five hundred thousand of our ed fund is really a food service money.
Okay. So it's a motion to duly do freezer, cooler, as outlined, we need some thousand dollars included in itself, right? Is there a motion to approve that as presented?
Awesome.
Is there a second?
Second.
Steve, anything to add on your end?
Needs to be done.
What, what's our time table?
We will start early June, be completed by mid-July. So the push is for, to get it done.
Not something you're, it's too big to do or spring break.
That's correct. Yeah, it's a pretty good sized project with demolition and, and a little bit of side restoration there.
All right. Further questions? Roll call, please.
McMurray?
Yes.
Hennessey, Schultz, Lamb?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes. Risk management plan.
Yes. We are required to have something about a risk management plan, basically to outline our expenses in the TORT fund that we levy for. So this, this, it's also a restricted funds. We can only spend it on certain things. Anything that could cause risk to students or staff or to the district as a whole. So a lot of our, our legal bills are paid out there. I mean, obviously not any legal bills related to, to negotiations or anything like that, but, you know, legal bills for different types of liability, what moves come. And then, you know, we have portions of salaries. The people within there have done time studies in the past and continue to review that every year to see if it's an adequate amount of time of what they spend dealing with safety issues. Some things that we added this year that are a little bit different is the paging and phone system because we're going to use some of that money for the paging part of it because it is for emergencies. There's been some AED items that have come up. So there's two portables that we needed and another, just a regular AED at LT, but the other two portables are for the high school and the junior high for athletics. Just to make sure that everything is there, the go bags, which I've learned that's where they have all the stuff when there's an emergency. There's suitcases, there's all kinds of bags and suitcases. Anyways, making sure that everything's in there that they need. And then just signs, signs basically saying where things are and where the AEDs are. So we're working with one vendor for the district that Lincoln Trail already had used to make the way signs, so they're all consistent through the buildings as well.
Questions for Heather on the risk management plan? Recommendations we approve, risk management plan as presented, is there a motion to do that?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Questions? Roll call, please.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schultz, McMurray?
Yes.
Tennessee, McCollum?
Yes. Let's go ahead and take five minutes and we're past thirty, thirty mark. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. All right, we're back up and rolling. We've had a little comfort break. Appreciate those few minutes. Number five under new business network structure request proposal.
Good evening. So prior to tonight, we'd already approved our phone system that we approved back in December. Thank you for that. I told you at that December meeting that I'd be coming back to you with two agenda items in regards to network infrastructure and then cabling. This first one is network infrastructure. So we are adding a ton of new equipment to our existing network, which requires additional pieces of hardware to accommodate for that equipment. So we're adding clocks and bells and phones and all kinds of bits and pieces. And all those bits and pieces have to plug in somewhere, right? So that physical hardware is what was required to make that all function. So this particular proposal we had...
Wrong board bar. No.
Is this different, cabling or infrastructure?
I apologize.
You're doing the infrastructure. Infrastructure, okay. So we had...
Why is that you're so wrong?
Guys, it doesn't work that way. You still have to have the infrastructure, Max. So the infrastructure itself, we had six bidders. This was just a proposal that was submitted out. We had... We're not required, since this is an RFP, we're not required to accept the lowest bid. But we do have to factor in cost as the highest percentage out of a hundred points. Cost has to be a higher percentage. So we factor cost in at thirty percent. If you look at that spreadsheet that I included in the board bar, we factor in cost at thirty percent and then the remaining make up the remaining hundred percent. We chose Heart Technologies out of Peoria. One, because we've worked with them in the past. And number two, they were the second lowest bidder. Those are the two big reasons why we chose them. The lowest bidder actually was under by about thirteen thousand dollars. However, what we discovered was they were missing some pieces of equipment. So they probably would have came out about the same as Heart. So we kind of mixed out that bid altogether because they were missing bits and pieces of information. Every single organization had the exact same information, so to appear as completely unbiased as possible. Any questions in regards to this particular request?
That's really stupid question because this is not my world. When you get the infrastructure pieces and then the phone system, are they compatible with all other things? So like if we change out our phone system, we don't have to change this.
In the world of technology, we rely heavily on standards. And those standards go across over companies, right? So not one single company has expressed like...
So it would not be like Apple changing their charging cord from like this to this?
No, no, no. And even in the world where you have an Apple iPhone, like you can get a different charger from outside of Apple, right? Right, right. So it didn't used to be this way. Like technology, when in its infancy, it was all proprietary. But we rely so much on open standards.
It's not that way.
No, everything is standardized.
Thank you, that was...
Yep. The other component to this is this is E-rated. So sixty percent of this is going to be paid for by the federal government. The district has to come up with the remaining forty percent.
I move that we approve the district network cabling project as presented.
No, never infrastructure.
Network infrastructure.
There you go. I was off.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion or questions for Jared?
I will say, let me be abundantly clear. So I appreciate the conversation for this. But anytime that we do any sort of infrastructure, this is not a one and done, right? This is an ongoing conversation. I'll come back in a handful of years, right? Like five, six years to do this again. The schools typically in the past would be like, well, we bought that, we're good. It doesn't work. It's not like a... It's not something that you just buy once and you never think about it ever again. This is an ongoing conversation.
Roll call vote on the infrastructure.
McNairy?
Yes.
Lam?
Yes.
Tennessee, Schultz, McCone?
Yes.
Data cable?
Correct.
Okay.
Because apparently cables aren't infrastructure.
They're two separate things. So the data cabling project, we had mandatory walkthrough that occurred before Thanksgiving break. And we had five vendors that showed up. And in order for them to bid on it, they had to come through a walkthrough because we wanted to make sure that they walked through every single one of our billings and they weren't left wondering about any sort of thing. So we had five contractors show up. Only two of those contractors submitted bids. Heart Technology submitted a bid and as well as Consolidated Communications out of that too. Heart came in at four thirty-nine, five sixty-nine. And Consolidated came in at a five forty, somewhere in there. It's in the spreadsheet. I don't remember the exact number.
Five oh six.
Five oh six. So Heart came in significantly lower than Consolidated. Again, it is a competitive bid from a perspective of they are all given the exact same details. So there's nothing that one vendor has over the other. And in complete transparency, if one vendor would ask a question, I would then reply to every single vendor saying, hey, a vendor has asked this question. I would list the question and then I would give our response. So they all can build the exact same tools for us. Again, this is E-rated. So sixty percent will be covered by the federal government and the remaining forty percent will be covered by the district. Those numbers, sixteen forty, it varies depending on what your free interviews count is. That's how that makes that up. So Mohammed Seymour, we get sixty percent coverage. For example, Rand Tool gets like ninety-seven percent. So there's a significant difference based off of where your free interviews count at.
What's all this work?
So if this is approved, the cabling portion, they are anticipating starting second shift within a matter of weeks. I have a meeting tomorrow to lay out time limits.
Travel presumptuous.
That's what they told me. I have a meeting with them regardless in the event that something didn't go down. So, no. So we anticipate starting the second shift. We have set a hard date of complete project completion of August first. Phones, cabling, everything has to be done by August first. Cabling has to be done before the phones. And so if the cabling is not done, the phones don't work, right? And so we said that you have to be a hundred percent complete by August one because that's when our office staff come back. That's when we start gearing backup. So that's our timeline. If we get bits and pieces done ahead of time, then that's great. We turn that over. But August one is a hard day. But they have told me that they're planning on starting second shift for a good chunk of this. And then over spring break, they're going to hit it hard for those days. And then whatever is not complete after school is laid out, then we go during normal day shifts and get the work done. The other component to this is making sure that we coordinate with facilities and making sure that we are not stepping on their toes. So one of the things that Heart has been made thoroughly aware of is that we are not leaving a space dirtier than we found it, right? So because a lot of this work is going to occur above the ceiling. They move a ceiling tile, they pull the cable, they put the ceiling tile back. We don't leave exposed ceiling tiles. So a lot of that work, they know this. They work at schools all the time. So this is a conversation that they were not shocked to hear.
If they break ceiling tiles...
If they break ceiling tiles, we'll have a conversation about it. I mean, it depends on the ceiling tile, right? Like is it brittle? But yeah, no, it's a valid conversation. The other thing too is in the contract, there is no change orders unless specific requests might us. So this is an all encompassing cost, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This is an all-in cost, right? Unless the district specifically calls out something that was not included in that scope, this is the double bottom dollar.
I would move that we approve the district network cabling project as presented.
Data cable.
Data cables.
Data.
Data.
Network was the only...
No, really?
They're more of the same.
This is data cable.
Yes.
Well, I am looking at my board bar.
Oh, I'm looking at the agenda. All right.
I move that we approve what we're talking about.
Data cable.
Data cable request.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm looking at this, gosh, I'm pretty excited. Roll call vote please.
Tennessee, Schultz, Lam?
Yes.
McNairy?
Yes.
McCone?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is board vacations. So let me start. By again, we're in writing that, you know, Max didn't vacate positions. Our attorney didn't vacate positions. The regional superintendent didn't vacate positions. It was the act of the elected official moved out of the area they were elected to represent that they came into positions. I guess there's also been a discussion of what does it mean to have moved. Well, in one case, the board members readily admitted they moved and didn't realize they were moving out of Mahone Township. When I called them up, he said, I think you moved out of Mahone Township. He said, no. And called me back later and go, you're right. I didn't even realize I did that. In the other case, there's been some dispute and or some disagreement. And I know they brought up, well, you know, we believe Max said he lives in Mahone. He doesn't live in his house in Missouri. Well, you know, I'm in Missouri two days a month, right? I was down there two days a week. She doesn't even qualify to make Missouri your primary residence. If we can figure out how to qualify Missouri as our primary residence, there would be huge tax incentives. Everyone should do that. So and frankly, if I ever claim that Mahone is my current residence and there's photos of my house online empty, y'all ought to call me out on it. I would never try to say I live in a house that's got... That's empty, okay? And that's my primary residence and my other house isn't. So it's pretty clear what is happening here. And that vacated those seats. The date we put on that was the nineteenth of December. So that being said, we have sixty days from that day to fill those vacancies. We, the district posted those vacancies. We, both seats are outside Mahone Township. We actually had three applicants. Two of the applicants were Becky Severns and Kyle Jordan. They are on the ballot in April. They're running unopposed in April. The other applicant was Cheryl Sizer. I've known Cheryl for a lot of years. And I spoke with Cheryl and I said, look, we've got, you know, two applicants that are already unopposed in April are likely going to apply. And she goes, well, I'm going to apply just in case one of those don't apply. You would have another option. But it would make sense to me if they're going to be on the board in any way, you go ahead and appoint them now and let them get a three-month head start. She goes, that only makes sense. She goes, the other reason I would go ahead and put in an application is, you know, over the years I've thought about being on the boards and they run for the board. Or even responding from time to time when the appointments would come available. But my life, you know, I've been busy doing a lot of other things than doing resumes. It's very impressive. I've known Cheryl for a lot of years. She's done a lot of great things in her life and has a very impressive resume. And she goes, you know, a lot of those things are fading off now. And I'm at the point where down the road, sort of on the board, I've got more interest in that. And so the other reason I would throw my name out just to get my name out there in case down the road there's another vacancy or I was to decide to run, people could start to become familiar with my name. So we had that discussion. She said, look, if you're going to promote the two that are running anyway, I get that. I understand that. She goes, but that makes a ton of sense. So that is where we're at. We've got those three names. And we can do several things. We can interview if we wanted to. We could go into closed session and review kind of the information we sent if we wanted to. I think in this case, given our present circumstances and the fact that it's just really a ninety-day appointment and two individuals will serve anyway, I would recommend we just appoint the two individuals that we like to serve.
I think Cheryl's wonderful. I was also able to touch base with her.
Yeah.
I think you were able to touch base with her.
Yes, too.
And she's wonderful. I do think it makes sense to ask Kyle and Becky to step in to that role for the next short term, considering they willingly knew what they were getting into when they put in their petition to run for school board. So it's just basically starting a little bit early and they're unopposed anyway. So I would move, can I make a motion? I would move that we appoint Kyle Jordan and Rebecca, I guess we should say Severns, not Becky.
Rebecca.
To those two open seats.
Is there a second?
I would second that. And I'd also just like to add that I appreciate everyone that signed up and applied for this. I also appreciate the candidates that submitted their names to run for the election in April. We can do great work here and we appreciate you guys stepping up. And we look forward to votes to come and doing that work together.
We've got a motion and a second to promote Rebecca Severns and Kyle Jordan to two spots. There's been a motion and a second and further discussion. This would be effective, I'm assuming tomorrow.
Sure.
We add that to the motion.
I move that we appoint Kyle Jordan or Rebecca Severns to the open board seats effective January eighteenth.
Normally it's an immediate appointment. They're not here and we have a real business slot tonight. They've not been briefed up in any way, so it just makes sense to do that tomorrow. Are you okay with that?
I would second that motion as well.
Good. All right, so the motion as it stands and as amended is to promote them effective tomorrow. And they'll be on board between now and when they're seated, which is like the very innovative person there, right? So roll call vote.
Tennessee, Schultz, McNairy?
Yes.
Lam?
Yes.
McCone?
Yes.
Appendix C, Dr. Lee?
Yes, yes. We went through the negotiations process as summary. As two of you were in the room, it was decided upon between the MSDA and our negotiating committee to separate out our appendix seat, which is all of our stipends with regard to extracurriculars and different academic duties as well. As you know, we settled a contract earlier in the fall, but we continued to negotiate, have conversations around our appendix seat. And that was a rather large committee that whittled down to the end of a few of us on there. I wasn't nearly as intimately involved during the negotiations process that did get involved a little bit later in the fall. We did come to an agreement prior to Christmas break. And Mr. Mills and Mr. Turek fleshed everything out and agreed to that. And then I asked Mr. Jeff Hung to create a memorandum of understanding that memorializes that appendix seat for the length of this contract. So it would be involved with some back pay on that for any of the stipends that were increased. And this would be in effect through the length of this contract through twenty twenty-six. Happy to go into a closed session and discuss. And if you guys have further questions on it, the MSDA has signed the memorandum of understanding. It's in the signature folder for this evening. So we are asking for approval. If we want to discuss it in closed session, since it feels like negotiations, more than happy to do so, or you can choose to approve. It's up to you.
Do we have a desire to come to closed session?
Can I safely assume that you're not bringing us a document full of lies? I sincerely don't understand where that came from.
I'm not aware of anything that's untruthful in here.
I reviewed the document. I wasn't going to ask the same. I was going to work.
I didn't, I couldn't, I mean, I've looked at this. I don't, I can't figure that out. I felt very stuck by that. I'm glad I wasn't the only one who was.
No, I didn't understand what that comment, that reference, there was no other explanation. I mean, I was told nothing other than what we just heard in closed sessions from Dr. Lee saying, nothing shared with you. I'm legitimately confused over that comment. I reviewed the document. It looked like it was patterned after the previous document. It looked like it was all well and ordered.
Yeah.
Not that patterned after the previous document makes it right. When you think of the major issues, we would know that, I certainly didn't see any.
I think the other big thank you...
And the MSDA didn't see it.
Right. Big thank you that goes out is also to our payroll.
Yes.
With all of this.
Yes. So this should be the last piece and then...
Okay.
I move that we approve the appendix seat.
I would second that.
I've got no reason that I can think of why we should not move forward. So I'm fine with that.
Can we have the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding that encloses what the changes to appendix C is presented?
Yep. I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding. The proposed MOU and the enclosed changes to appendix C as presented.
There you go. I've got a motion to leave.
Thank you.
Besides that, a little thank you.
I'll second.
So just to be clear, we're approving the changes and the updates to appendix C and the memorandum of understanding with the...
Schultz, Lam?
Yes.
McNairy?
Yes.
Tennessee, McCone?
Yes. Dr. Lee, I don't see any reason to go into closed session. No, sir. So seeing no reason to close, go into closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn for you?
Someone?
Second. Discussion. If they adjourn, say adjourn, I always go kind of that. All of us say adjourn and say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Thank you everybody. Appreciate everybody hanging with us.